From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, 9:00 AM meeting of the Board of Supervisors. First item is roll call.
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Next item is the salute to the flag, and I don't know if he knows it or not, but Mr. Ralph Rublitz has been volunteered to do the flag salute this morning. And we know that you are a veteran, but we don't know that much about where you served. Can you give us a little bit of that before we do this?
Good morning, sir.
But we'll keep it to two minutes, Ralph, by the way.
I'm accustomed to public speaking as I am. I joined in 1963 and I retired in 1983. I was a paratrooper with the Special Operations as a combat controller for nine years. And I traveled from as far north as Grand Forks, North Dakota, when it was 47 below. And I drowned off of Key West as I attended the Green Beret Scuba School. And I was, I think I was run out of town in the city of Alborg, Denmark for getting drunk. But I did enjoy myself in the Philippines and I was in love with the Vietnamese people. And I was enthralled in Thailand because everybody there thought I was a big Thai.
Well, with all that experience, public speaking in front of this, in front of the board probably doesn't scare you too much. So thank you for your service to our country and thank you for leading us in the flag salute today. At the conclusion of that, I'd ask for you to remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Thank you, sir. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Ralph.
Thank you, Mr. Rublitz.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is second only to the flag salute in our level of importance and how much we like it, and that's the pet of the week. So Nick Cullen is our Director of Valuable Services. And this little guy didn't have a very good trip over. You can tell him about it, but he got carsick.
Yes, good morning.
Is it your driving that causes this?
It could be. It could be. Chairman Couchman is on the board. This is Henry. As you said, Henry doesn't like car rides. We know that for a fact.
So he's normally very energetic, right?
He normally is. You get him in the car for seven to 10 minutes and his lunch might make a reappearance, but he's a sweet dog. Our volunteers chose him to be at the board this morning because he's just such a sweet dog and gets along with other dogs as well, and he's available for adoption this morning at the Kern County Animal Shelter.
So let's find Henry and throw him around. Thank you, Nick. To you.
The next item is the consent agenda.
All items listed with a C or a CA above the item number are considered to be routine or non-controversial by county staff. Stick with me, I'll get through this. We can act on those all in one vote. If you'd like to make a comment or pull any of those items for separate consideration, a board member needs to do that, but you can request it, and now's the time to do so. The consent agenda starts on page two, consists of items four and seven and eight. On to page three, all the items nine through 18. Page four, all the items 19 through 26. Page five, all the items, excuse me, items 27 through 30 and items 32 through 34. On to page six, all the items 35 through 43. Page seven, all the items 44 through 51. Page eight, all the items 52 through 58. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment or ask a question about any of the items I just read off? Seeing none, I return to the board.
Okay, motion on the consent items?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. That takes us back to page two, the top of page two, under the Resolutions and Proclamations portion. Item one proclaims September 28th, 2024 as National Good Neighbor Day in Kern County, and it will be presented by Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Chairman. I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Today I'm joined by Justin Powers as well as Karen Zuber, and we are here to proclaim September 28th as National Good Neighbor Day in Kern County. And if I remember right, I think this was first proclaimed by President Carter in 1978 from what I saw. And both of these folks here are great examples of good neighbors to their community. Karen, through her work with Kern Bridges and the Kern River Valley, and Justin with all of his work, including Kernville cowork, which is a great opportunity to work with your neighbors. This is a really, really awesome proclamation, and it really stresses the importance of community and of getting to know one another and working together. And Kern County has always been a great example of that in their generosity and pulling together during crises like we've seen during the Burrell Fire. And so I would just like to thank you for bringing this proclamation, the idea to do this forward. And it's our pleasure to proclaim September 28th as National Good Neighbor Day in Kern County. And this recognition will be entered into the board minutes, and it has been signed by our Honorable Chairman, David Couch. I'll turn it over to you, Justin.
Phillip said I could have two hours, if that's okay. Good morning, Chairman Couch and members of the board. Thank you, Phillip, for presenting the proclamation, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for recognizing National Good Neighbor Day and the importance of connecting with one another in our communities. My name is Justin Powers. I'm a proud resident of District One from the Kern River Valley. I do want to mention really quickly that my email to the board mentions the gathering at the Kern River Library on Good Neighbor Day. Unfortunately, there's this awesome renovation project they're doing, and so we had to postpone that. Instead, we're taking this opportunity to pilot smaller, more intimate community gatherings with a strong focus on neighbor-to-neighbor connection. I want to thank you for recognizing not just National Good Neighbor Day, but also recognizing the importance of personal connection and the role that local government can play in building stronger, more connected communities. In materials I provided the board, I provided a National Good Neighbor Guide for local governments, which contains some helpful advice for local governments in how to build stronger communities, including investing in social infrastructure like parks, community centers, coworking spaces, as well as supporting community-based organizations that are already working to foster connections in our communities. In the Kern River Valley, Kern County has been supporting these local community-based organizations by partnering with these organizations through the, through Neighbor-to-Neighbor, a program of California Volunteers, Office of the Governor. Through this program, the county and the state have been supporting local organizations focused on connecting neighbors to neighbors, including the Kern River Valley Art Association, Riverstone Wellness, Hopester, including their work on the Kern River Valley Bridge Connection, and Sierra Shared Spaces, a nonprofit I founded last year with the goal of creating ambitious new shared spaces and opportunities for connection in rural communities like the Kern River Valley. I want to close by saying Kern County is on the cusp of revolutionizing the way that people in rural communities connect with each other. At Sierra Shared Spaces, we're working with pioneers of the North American coworking movement, people like Ashley Proctor, creator of the first coworking space in North America, Tony Bajakalupo, the creator of the first coworking space in Manhattan, to create transformative projects that connect our communities in ways that we haven't been able to before. We're connecting across the country and across the world with pioneers in rural shared spaces. In fact, we're involved in putting on the Coworking Canada Conference in just a couple of weeks. If any of you want to see what's possible in creating communities, come visit us up in Vancouver. Thank you again for all of your work and for recognizing the importance of connection in our communities. I look forward to continuing to work with every single one of you in the future.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Perez.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Powers, I would love to get together with you, if you don't mind. We are doing very similar work, not in the rural parts per se, but more of the urban centers, but focused around exactly what you're saying, face-to-face, neighbor-to-neighbor, you know, a new way of doing things in our, in our communities, because we're like afraid of our neighbors. It's crazy. We don't know them, we're afraid of them, and they're really wonderful people. The overwhelming odds are, Mr. Powers, so I would like to get with you. There's other organizations in town that are really sophisticated, the Blue Zones Project, and others that are oriented around thinking about literacy and driving community to our parks, you know, with after building them up. I mean, it's a total game changer, and I think it's the crisis of our generation. And I'm just so impressed and pleased to see you here, and I'm so grateful to you. And I'd love to get with you. So if you could call the Fifth District Office, let's get coffee. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item two proclaims September 27th, 2024 as California Native American Day and September 28th through 29th as Tahone Indian Tribes Annual Powel in Kern County. And this, both these will be presented by Supervisors. And this, both these will be presented by Supervisor Flores.
Motion on item two?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Because today, we honor California Native American Day, recognizing the rich cultural heritage, history, and contributions of Native, Native American communities in our county and across the state of California. This day established as the Fourth Friday in September ever since its inception in 1998 serves as a reminder of the resilience and enduring spirit of Native American peoples whose traditions and wisdom continue to enrich our society. So, just for some context, the 57th Annual California Native American Day will be Friday, September 27th, at our State Capitol. The event is hosted by the California Tribal Chairpersons Association, and this year's theme is recognizing 100 years of citizenship and the fight for the right to vote, 1924 to 2024. And so, on behalf of our Board of Supervisors, we have a proclamation designating September 27th, 2024 as California Native American Day and September 28th through the 29th as Tahoma Indian Tribes Annual Powel in Kern County. And this is entered in our official Board Minutes, signed by our Chairman, Supervisor David Couch, dated this date. And at this time, I'd like to present this to the Chairman, Octavio Escobedo of the Tahoma Indian Tribe, and I think he's going to come up and say a few remarks and talk about some of the festivities here locally. Thank you. Congratulations.
Morning.
First, I want to thank the board, especially Chairman Couch and the rest of the Board of Supervisors for our years-long participation in governance. Together, we have formed a great relationship, going back to our first intergovernmental agreement for our community center and office site out in Arvin. I'd like to acknowledge our, also our Executive Council members that are here with us today, Vice Chairwoman June Nature, Lisa Nadel, Councilmember-at-large, and Lisa Bradley, our Executive Secretary, and also Candy Assencion, our current Public Relations Outreach Person. Just want to keep it short and really acknowledge what you're doing here today, acknowledging us as a tribe, as a federal entity, is very important to us. Our longstanding relationship in the, in the community is very important to us. We want to acknowledge Bakersfield College. We are proud to be moving our powel there this coming weekend. We invite the public, it's free. Encourage you to come out, it's going to be a great event. We have over 30 vendors showing up, be dozens and dozens of dancers displaying our Native American culture for you guys. So, please come out if you can, and thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Next is item three, which proclaims Friendship Force of Kern County as the host for Romanian librarians to visit Kern County libraries from September 27th through October 5th, and this will be presented by Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Motion on proclamation?
Second.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Well, Chair, I'm going to continue the good vibes this morning as I present about the Friendship Force. Kathy, lot of hoopla about the Space Force, but I'm going to dig in on the Friendship Force. I just think it's more local and, you know, I have a little more influence on, on how we, you know, love each other. Are you Shay Lynn? Am I getting that right? Shay Lynn? Got it. Forgive me, Shay Lynn, and you'll make your presentation in just a moment. But Honorable Chairman and colleagues, I am proud to stand before you today to proclaim Friendship Force of Kern County as the host for Romanian librarians to visit Kern County libraries, September 27th through October 5th. This is a first, Kathy, and I think it's really cool. The Friendship Force of Kern County submitted a proposal to host Romanian librarians in the fall of 2024 to provide an opportunity to build friendships across the boundaries of language, culture, and geography. The program brings emerging leaders from European countries to the United States for 10 days of intensive exchange with their professional counterparts. This is so cool. Through this shared experience, participants gain an understanding of Kern County by meeting diverse individuals, learning about our local customs and culture. The Romanian librarians visit aims to explore our county library system and the leadership team that is transforming the public library environment for our residents through intentional partnerships. I like that. Intentional, we do have to be intentional. Yes, we do. Practices and training, it's not natural. It doesn't happen naturally. Friendship Force plans to showcase the recent successes of our county libraries to the visiting participants through a series of interviews, meetings, and tours. Thank you to our staff with the Kern County Library System for making this happen and for always bringing new and innovative ways to expand our minds and to open our hearts. So, today, I get the honor to make this presentation. The Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California officially proclaims 20, September 27th through October 5th as the Friendship Force of Kern County, Kern County's pleasure to host Romanian librarians at Kern County libraries. This recognition has been entered into the official minutes, signed by our Chairman, Supervisor David Couch, Chairman David Couch, and this is for you, a small token of appreciation, gratitude, and openness to what we all can learn from each other. So, thank you, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I'm Shalyn Panetta, and I'm with the Kern County Library. Nothing expands your worldview and knowledge base more than travel and meeting people from different places and backgrounds and cultures. So, when Sandra approached me with this proposed visit from the Romanian librarians, we were thrilled to participate, super excited, in this worthwhile cultural learning opportunity. The librarians from Romania will be visiting, touring, and exploring Kern County life starting this Friday. On Saturday, they're going to be touring the Beale Memorial Library and checking out a local history program, getting to know our library staff. On Monday, they're going to be doing a more in-depth behind-the-scenes tour, all the non-public spaces that are kind of exciting to see, job shadowing some of our staff experts in the topics of community partnerships and collaborations, children's services, which is super important to us, and programming. We'll also have an open idea exchange to talk about our, our successes and achievements as well as learn about library services in Romania. And the Kern County Library welcomes these Romanian librarians and professionals, and we're very excited to learn from one another and share ideas freely. So, I would like to now introduce Sandra Larson, a representative from Friendship Force Kern County, an amazing visionary who has helped make this connection possible. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, the Kern County Library, and everybody in Kern County who has helped put this particular visit together. Friendship Force is an organization international in scope, a nonprofit. It is not connected or associated with any religion or any political party or ideas or any governmental agency, or, and it's not limited by the boundaries that separate us. It is an organization that has meant a great deal to my husband and I, who is sitting here with us today over the last several, many years. And I know that we have brought people here to be welcomed by you, and many times, you're going to be shut down next week, but we're having a secret, just to let you know that you're invited to a reception up in the point room on that day. So, we hope that many of you will not be scattering off to far reaches and will stop by and say hello. Open World is separate from Friendship Force. It is funded by the United States Congress through the Congressional Office of International Leadership, and we will actually have a representative here with us that day from the Office of the Congressional Office of International Leadership, or COIL. Congressman Valadeo, a, a local connection, is Chairman of the Subcommittee that funds that organization, and we will be stopping by on Wednesday morning to meet and say hello to him as well and give him a sample of what it looks like to bring people like this to our country and find out what we're going to be doing. I cannot thank the board and the people of Kern County enough for the support over the years. Jeff Flores was involved in the very first one in 2005. I don't think he was even elected to anything at that point, but he showed up to a mayor hall.
Troublemaker.
We showed up to a mayor hall reception at one of the pizza places, a reception for young leaders, and has been involved in that every time, except when the Turkmenistan guys came, opened our eyes to the fact that their country is rather repressed. They had to sign a, in writing before they left, that they would not talk to any politicians. I had crossed that, I told you weren't politicians, you were just saying hello. I got that set boundary. When we got here and I told them they would be on television, they freaked, and we left the building at a fast pace and went and had coffee for a while. So, having these people here opens our eyes almost probably more than their eyes are open, because we see the kinds of, of differences in the countries. Friendship Force is all about seeing how we're the same, but Open World helps us to see the differences that do separate us and makes us very, very grateful for the country that we live in. So, we thank you again. The library, we're so impressed with what we've learned about the library in the last several months, the help and the assistance and the insights we've received from the library, from your library staff have been tremendous. We would not be able to be as proud of this program as we are going to be and without their assistance. So, thank you very, very much for the proclamation and hope to see you during this next week.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm plugged in here.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Perez.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Powers, I would love to get together with you, if you don't mind. We are doing very similar work, not in the rural parts per se, but more of our urban centers, but, but focused around exactly what you're saying, face-to-face, neighbor-to-neighbor, you know, a, a new way of doing things in our, in our communities, because we're like afraid of our neighbors. It's crazy. We don't know them, we're afraid of them, and they're really wonderful people. The overwhelming odds are, Mr. Powers, so I would like to get with you, there's other organizations in town that are really sophisticated, the Blue Zones Project, and others that are oriented around thinking about literacy and driving community to our parks, you know, with, after building them up. I mean, it's, it's a total game changer, and I think it's the crisis of our generation. And I'm just so impressed and pleased to see you here, and I'm so grateful to you. And I'd love to get with you, so.
Absolutely.
So, if you could call the Fifth District Office, let's get coffee. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item two proclaims September 27th, 2024 as California Native American Day and September 28th through 29th as Tahoma Indian Tribes Annual Powel in Kern County. And this, both these will be presented by Supervisor Flores.
Motion on item two?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Because today, we honor California Native American Day, recognizing the rich cultural heritage, history, and contributions of Native, Native American communities in our county and across the state of California. This day established as the Fourth Friday in September ever since its inception in 1998 serves as a reminder of the resilience and enduring spirit of Native American peoples whose traditions and wisdom continue to enrich our society. So, just for some context, the 57th Annual California Native American Day will be Friday, September 27th, at our State Capitol. The event is hosted by the California Tribal Chairpersons Association, and this year's theme is recognizing 100 years of citizenship and the fight for the right to vote, 1924 to 2024. And so, on behalf of our Board of Supervisors, we have a proclamation designating September 27th, 2024 as California Native American Day and September 28th through the 29th as Tahoma Indian Tribes Annual Powel in Kern County. And this is entered in our official Board Minutes, signed by our Chairman, Supervisor Perez, dated this date. And at this time, I'd like to present this to the Chairman, Octavio Escobedo of the Tahoma Indian Tribe, and I think he's going to come up and say a few remarks and talk about some of the festivities here locally. Thank you. Congratulations.
Morning.
Hello. Dennis McLean, M.C., capital L-E-A-N. Good morning, Chairman Couch and Supervisors. Thank you, Chairman Couch and Supervisor Perez, for forming a committee to address the grievances concerning our election department. We are concerned citizens pushing for free and fair elections. I know some of you supervisors have similar opinions as I do, that current government is too big and out of control. With that said, I see our state government overreach taking away our local control and our economy on energy, agriculture, and water resources that has hurt our county, not to mention the decline of our public education. I'll be reading from a Kern County election letterhead that was posted on their website that states a, the observation schedule for this coming election. It notes, "The public is invited to observe Kern County Election Department as it conducts a series of public-related, related events to the election. All events will take place at the election office according to the following schedule: September 23rd, 2024, yesterday, 10:00 a.m., logic and accuracy testing of the county's high-speed ballot scanners and voter tabulation system. Myself and Mr. Shin showed up yesterday, and the staff said testing was canceled because material did not arrive. Needless to say, we were irked." In closing, with our election department under poor leadership, I suggest the board split the registrar voters from the auditor controller of County Clerk Department. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. McLean.
Thank you, boy. My name is Tyrone Smith. It's, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, but I needed to say this right now. As he said, our election department is in trouble. It sure is. Amy Espinoza is a liar. She fired my wife of 10 years, and she lied. And it's on, it's on record that she lied in the board meeting, I mean, in the, in the hearing. You guys have no integrity in your election department. You're about to go into a, a new election with nobody in
to let everyone know that Romania is a strong supporter of NATO. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next? By the way, do we have our next? It's a, I forgot the name of the standing committee. Finance Administration, that is reviewing elections issues. Do we have that scheduled yet?
Chair Couch, we're actually establishing that for every third Monday of the month. We're finalizing the minutes from the first meeting, and we'll be scheduling that accordingly.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hello. Dennis McLean, M.C., capital L-E-A-N. Good morning, Chairman Couch and supervisors. Thank you, Chairman Couch and Supervisor Perez, for forming a committee to address the grievances concerning our election department. We are concerned citizens pushing for free and fair elections. I know some of you supervisors have similar opinions as I do, that current government is too big and out of control. With that said, I see our state government overreach taking away our local control and our economy on energy, agriculture, and water resources that has hurt our county, not to mention the decline of our public education. I'll be reading from a Kern County election letterhead that was posted on their website that states the observation schedule for this coming election. It notes, "The public is invited to observe Kern County Election Department as it conducts a series of public-related events to the election. All events will take place at the election office according to the following schedule. September 23, 2024, yesterday, 10:00 AM, logic and accuracy testing of the county's high-speed ballot scanners and voter tabulation system. Myself and Mr. Shin showed up yesterday, and the staff said, 'Testing was canceled because material did not arrive.' Needless to say, we were irked." In closing, with our election department under poor leadership, I suggest the board split the registrar voters from the auditor controller of County Clerk Department. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. McLean.
Thank you, boy. My name is Tyrone Smith. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, but I needed to say this right now. As he said, our election department is in trouble. It sure is. Amy Espinoza is a liar. She fired my wife of 10 years, and she lied. And it's on, it's on record that she lied in the board meeting. I mean, in the, in the hearing. You guys have no integrity in your election department. You're about to go into a new election with nobody in there that knows what, that's never been through one of these elections. My wife was the last person that worked in the election department for 10 years, and they fired her for saying that she was looking at an email. You guys are wrong. Couch, Flores, you guys have talked to my wife, and you know the, you know what the history is of this. And you guys are wrong, period. That's all I can get up here and say, because it's like, you really don't care. Seriously, I don't think any one of you care. When I leave here, probably nothing would happen. That little Monday meeting, we wasn't surprised that it was canceled, that they couldn't look at the ballot things. You know why? Because they don't know how to operate them. Period. You want to know the truth? That's the truth. You guys are sitting up here playing with people's lives. My wife has lost her job, we lost her, her healthcare. My son has medication that he's need because he has problems, and you guys just think this is a joke. You think it's a real joke, you're really playing with lies. Amy Espinoza has no reason to be in that department. She is a liar, she has no integrity. And if anybody wants to see the record, her record was public hearing. So if anybody wants to see the transcripts from her hearing, where you can see on file that Amy Espinoza clearly lied, and said that she didn't even know what the evidence was that they was presenting against my wife. How are you going to fire somebody, and you don't even know what the evidence is reading? It's a shame. You guys ought to be ashamed of yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, board members. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Charles Shin, S-H-I-N-N. I am a retired Marine. Yesterday, several citizens traveled to the elections department to take part and observe in the logic and accuracy testing of the vaunted Dominion tabulation machines. This was publicly announced and published on kernvote.com website. Again, the date was yesterday, 23rd of September, 2024, at 10:00 AM. We arrived early and requested entrance to observe public testing, but after some 12-minute delay to clarify information, we were informed that the testing was canceled due to materials not arriving. This failure should have been announced earlier to prevent citizens from planning and traveling to find out that with which was already known by elections management. I guess you can't test without critical materials, can you? Register voter statistics from Kern Vote. From January of this year through May, that's five months, there was a net gain of 1,850 registrations, or 370 a month for five months. From June through August, there was a net gain of 9,949 registrations in three months. That winds up being 3,316 registrations per month. I call that registration voter role inflation. We still see 199 registrations with the phony registration date of 1 January of 1900, which makes these folks 124 years old, or older. The oldest living American is 110, and he lives in Torrance, California. These need immediate verification and/or removal. Thank you.
Mr. Shin, could I ask you a question about that? About the, the testing that you wanted to observe? I, I'm unfamiliar with this, so I don't know when they knew that whatever they needed to, to be delivered to be there, wasn't there? Were they expecting it in that morning? Were they expecting it a week ago? Do you know any of that stuff?
No, sir, I, I don't know, but I think they probably knew at least a day in advance if the materials wasn't there, that by 10 o'clock in the morning, they're not going to be prepared to do the, the testing.
I understand. I'm sorry you, you all were inconvenienced, but I'll ask a few questions about that from someone who, I don't expect you to know, I just thought you might know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Chairman Couch. My name is Glenn Clayton, C-L-A-Y-T-O-N. We concerned citizens would like you to formally consider the rescinding of ordinance G-6050 of 1994 before the next election cycle of 2026. This ordinance is responsible for the consolidation of three separate official functions, Kern Auditor Controller, County Clerk, Registrar of Voters. Now, we assume the elections department staff are making the best efforts under the current increased demand to secure fair and free elections, but we have a concern. Citizens do not have a bias-free auditor and self-auditing of lectures. Elections of both departments are led by the same official. Another concern, the elections environment, the codes, the physical, logistical, equipment, personnel duties, technological hardware, software systems, financial contractual agreements, and security have greatly, greatly increased since 1994. We experience continual inadequacies in reporting election results. For example, most recent election, Kern was near to last in certification. We see some slow, almost non-existent communications in person, email, phone requests, unavailable materials such as maps to candidates, inaccurate information from staff too numerous to cite, a lack of compliance to the National Voters Registration Act, a lack of updated data to citizens on the website, and California Privacy Rights Act. We are specifically concerned with the addition of technologies removing human oversight and control of data, as in poll book failures, unaccounted missed registration fluctuations in old software, lack of inactive registration removals, past warnings of pending litigation, not maintaining accurate voter roles that are missing qualifying information, lack of stack, staff retention, indicates there's just not enough of staff to pay, to, to, for the attention and balance of the duties in maintaining the continuous data control. So please consider this with great, with, with your time, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Linda Welch, L-I-N-D-A-W-E-L-C-H, and I'm the mother of Marcy Welch, who was recently wrongfully terminated from the election department. She appealed her wrongful termination with the Civil Service Board. After hearing and reviewing all of the evidence, the unanimous, the commissioners unanimously determined she was in fact wrongfully terminated. Unfortunately, they recommended she be reinstated to that toxic environment. I say unfortunately because it's so toxic that it's detrimental to her physical, emotional, and mental health. So she had no choice but to rightfully resign. I want to highlight a pressing issue that I feel continues to be overlooked. While there has been much discussion in board meetings about concerns regarding election fraud and lack of communication, another critical problem remains unaddressed. The election department is facing a presidential general election with very few, if any, experienced in this type of election. Since Amy Espinoza and Laura Cantu took over in 2020, they have driven away 15 skilled, competent, experienced employees. Why hasn't this alarming turnover raised significant concerns? Some of you were made aware of these issues two years ago through official channels. Why wasn't there an investigation? The election department is vital to all citizens in our county. Those who regularly come before you at these meetings have legitimate concerns that deserve your full attention. However, voter fraud and conspiracy theories are not the problem. The lack of experience in a presidential election is the problem every citizen in this county should be aware of and be very concerned about. I have heard you praise the election officers for their extensive experience in the numerous special elections they have dealt with. That is all fine and good, but a local election is entirely different than a presidential election. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Any other public speakers today?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
Marcy Welch, M-A-R-C-I-E-W-E-L-C-H. I have a statement that I prepared. But, and I'm sorry, I'm just telling you, I'm gonna go over two minutes. And I deserve it after 16 years of tenure with the county.
Well, we try not to let anybody go over two minutes, but several people have, so please give us your comments.
These individuals that came before you concerned about why logic and accuracy, see that's, you know, I'm not in there anymore, so I did not know. But I will tell you that our sole programmer that was in the Kern County Elections Department, that was our Dominion expertise, and he was the individual that ran and oversaw the logic and accuracy, was one of the individuals that was chased out of that department. He left in January of 2023, and he took his election expertise to a whole nother county elections department, and is in a management position there. When these individuals come before you and tell you that they don't get responses, they're not lying to you. I was in there. I used to sit at my desk and watch these meetings and hear them. Despite my proven dedication and exemplary performance for 16 years, I was terminated from my position as an elections process supervisor. This decision was not only unwarranted, but also deeply distressing and caused considerable emotional and mental strain affecting both my personal and professional well-being. Although I have been since fully reinstated by the Civil Service Commission. The experience of being terminating, terminated and the hostile environment that I went through, and 15 of my prior employees went through for the last four years, there was no way I could go into that department and continue to be productive and effective. So I had to resign. I feel I was forced to resign, and I shouldn't have had to. I was told by commission that they didn't have the authority to transfer me, but they have the authority to reinstate me. That makes no sense to me, but okay.
But that's, that's my understanding as well.
It's not logical, but... It is important, and I'm here today really to shed light on the mistreatment, to ensure that such actions are not repeated and to foster a more supportive and fair workplace for all employees. The handling of my termination and the truths that were exposed under sworn testimony during my appeal hearing are shocking. I was fired, and the individual that investigated me submitted evidence that she admitted under sworn testimony she didn't even understand. I was fired, and the individual, Amy Espinoza, the Kern County Registrar of Voters, admitted under sworn oath that she looked at that same piece of evidence, and she made a guess as to what it reflected. I lost my livelihood based off of somebody that didn't understand the evidence that they submitted, in my opinion, under false pretenses, because how do you submit evidence that you don't understand and claim that you used it to help you determine that I deserved to lose my job? How do you do that? I worked, Mr. Flores, oh, Mr. Flores, I don't mean to call you out, Ms. Flores, but in your words recently, you said to me I was one of the best, and that you would specifically seek me out when you needed help in the elections department because of my professionalism and my knowledge.
No, I, I stand by that. You were very courteous, knowledgeable, and helpful.
Ms. Welch.
I didn't deserve to be fired.
Ms. Welch.
My prior coworkers didn't deserve to be forced out of that department. It is a shame what has happened to the Kern County Elections Department.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public statements today? I'm sorry. Why don't you wait, why don't you wait till they exit so we can, so we can hear your comments? Thank you.
Okay, my name is John Hickman, that's J-O-N-H-I-C-K-M-A-N. And this is Delilah with me, D-E-L-I-L-A-H.
Yeah, if she's gonna speak, we got something. We'll give her, we'll give her more than two minutes.
You want her to?
Yeah.
I can take her two minutes if you want. Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board. You know, I, we usually come here with bad news, and I want to start off with some good, you know. We are making slow progress in our billing issues, and I appreciate the help. However, I must share some recent developments that highlights the critical gaps in care in our area. In the past two weeks, we've had two more overdose deaths in our community. These deaths may have been preventable, and there are solutions. We just need to remove the barriers to treatment created by this bureaucratic process. I just experienced a prime example. Yesterday, I spent three hours trying to get a client into residential treatment. My first attempt was with Tarzana, but they refused assessment due to the client's residence in Tehachapi. They directed me to Kern SUD access line. My first call to the access line resulted in being told going, go to the only provider in town for an assessment. Then I reached out to 211, only to be redirected back to the access line. On my second attempt to the access line, we finally received a telehealth assessment for the client. But then he was scheduled for an in-person assessment eight days later to determine eligibility for inpatient services. This timeline is unacceptable. People in crisis cannot wait over a week for the care they desperately need. Is this the standard of services across the entire county? If so, that's a shame. If not, then why is Eastern Kern not receiving the same level of care? We're not helping people when they need it most, and we need to ensure timely access to treatment. I urge the board to address this disparity and act swiftly. And since this time, we actually reached out to the director of Kern BHRS, and they are trying to help assess this client I'm speaking of. But most people aren't that lucky to be able to have that access to the director of Kern BHRS. You know, so there's a lot more people out there suffering that don't have that immediate access to care.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. My name is Joshua Pierce, J-O-S-H-U-A-P-I-E-R-C-E. Yes, Delilah is on staff with us at Cornerstone. She gets one bag of treats from Costco per month. And, and while we have seen some progress in our billing, as John stated, I don't know if that's from, from you guys, or if it's just they're finally catching up. But there's still a lot of issues. Like John said, in the last month, we've lost two individuals from overdoses. And it's been a month since we stood before this board, and I'm asking today if there's any updates. In the letter I provided, I provided two potential options that other counties use for times like this between RFPs and RFIs. And the county has released a couple of RFIs since then, but they were incorrect. They didn't like, they used the ASAM leveling, and they were, they were requesting information at a different level than what the RFI was asking for. And so thankfully, that got fixed. But there's still this issue of no services being provided. Last time I came here, I said that there were 12 of us or 10 of us able to provide substance abuse services in Tehachapi, and 10 of them worked at Cornerstone, two of them worked at the other program. Now there's only one, and that individual is an intern. And so it's not to say that her skills aren't there, but there's just a disparity when, the reason why it takes a whole week, eight days, for somebody who is in desperate need of treatment to have to wait a whole week to be assessed, when we can do the assessment, but we can't make the recommendation because we are not in network. We are asking that, that this decision does rest with the board. I know Chairman Couch... I know Chairman Couch, last time, asked about the process that we went through. And in my letter, I explained, we've gone through every level of the process along the way. And at the end of the day, the, the decision of who it goes to is this board. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate that last time you, you skipped the RFP process so that we could have emergency mental health services. That is desperately needed, and I'm very thankful for that in Eastern Kern. And I'm also thankful that I see today that you've set aside money for more intensive outpatient services for Bakersfield, but in Tehachapi, we're struggling.
Mr. Pierce, you mentioned a letter a couple of times.
Yes.
Do you have it with you?
I don't have it with me.
I submitted it two weeks ago.
That's the letter you're referring to, okay.
Yes. So it was one that I emailed to all of your offices.
Second question, and it's very direct.
Yes.
Do you have every authorization, I'm not even, I'm, I'm using that word loosely, everything you need from Medicare to be a provider in Kern County?
Yes.
Can you submit all of that to us? Whatever, whatever, I don't even know what that looks like. I'm speaking as though I understand what it looks, what it is, and I don't, so...
It's a piece of paper with a number on it, yes.
That's it?
Uh, it took six months to get, but yeah.
Okay. I'd like, please provide that to us.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers today? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Board Member Announcements and Reports. Anybody else?
Yeah, I do. Oh, thank you, thank you, Chairman. I made some comments in, in regard to Ms. Welch's comments, but my microphone was off, so now it's on. I wanna address that couple of things. So yes, in my, in my experience with Ms. Welch as a user from elections, from the public, she was always courteous, she was always professional, she was always knowledgeable, and I appreciate her work ethic. So I don't know what transpired from a employee, employer relationship with her supervisors, but I was not privy to that part, just the public part. And I think it's, you know, good validation for her from the Civil Service Commission, and I respect whatever decision she wants to make moving forward. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, I have a, a couple. The first one is that the Board of Supervisors will hold a special meeting on Monday, October 21st at 9:00 a.m. The board will consider a proposed project to facilitate the construction and operation of a carbon capture and storage facility. A separate mailed and posted public hearing notice has been published as required. So that's Monday, October 21st at 9:00 a.m. That's a single item on the agenda, correct? We anticipate that will take a, a long, there'll be a lot of testimony, which is why we're having a separate meeting. And on a more somber note, I would like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Bruce Dot Bliss. He passed away on Monday, September 16th, after a very brief illness. He was employed as an attorney with the County Council's office for more than twenty-nine years. He began his career as a deputy county council in June of 1982. He promoted to chief deputy in 1990 and retired in December of 2011. He primarily represented the planning department and Public Works, was instrumental in working with those departments to draft liberally hundreds of ordinances, reviewing EIRs and assisting the Planning Commission. He was also a mentor to many new deputy county council, county councils, including our current county council, Margot Rizan, and even mentored Planning Director Lorelei Oviat early in her career. He was generous with his knowledge and time. Bruce and his wife Kathy have three sons, daughters-in-law, and numerous grandchildren. During his retirement, Bruce enjoyed spending time with his family, and when he retired, he and Kathy made traveling all over the world a priority, and together, they spent, they won a dozen of international trips. He was an asset to Kern County, and we extend our deepest sympathies to his family and his friends. Again, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in his honor and send a letter that we typically do. Thank you. That takes us, any other announcements, Professor Perez, excuse me?
Thank you, Chairman Couch. I did not know that Bruce had passed away until this moment, so forgive me. Thank you for saying the things you said about Bruce. I met him as a Planning Commissioner in 2008. And what an incredible man Bruce was, a hundred percent of the time. Consummate professional, brilliant, big heart. And he also mentored me in many ways. What an incredible man, and what incredible contributions to Kern County and the Kern County family. To his family, thank you for sharing Bruce. He's a real man, the real deal. And, and he contributed to my development and my place in Kern County profoundly, more than most. So, uh, thank you, David, for the opportunity to say something. God bless you, Bruce, may he rest in peace.
You're welcome. Thank you. That takes us to item thirty-one, under the Public Health Services Department. It's an appeal by Willie Shawabane, I hope I'm saying that correctly, for Smoke Brothers, Inc. to contest the decision of the Public Health Services Department to uphold the tobacco retailer's permit suspension and administrative penalty for the sale of tobacco products to an underage decoy. Good morning, Ms. Kerrigan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Bryn Kerrigan, your Director of Kern County Public Health. The item before your board this morning is an appeal contesting the department's decision to uphold the second violation for tobacco sales to our underage decoy and the suspension of the tobacco retailer's permit for thirty days and the assessment of a, an administrative penalty in the amount of $500 for Smoke Bros., Inc. Smoking is the number one preventable cause of death in the United States and leads to approximately 480,000 deaths each year. Smoking significantly increases risk for the development of heart disease, stroke, and cancers, all chronic diseases that Kern County suffers from at disproportionately high rates. Nearly nine out of ten, of every ten adults who smoke daily try smoking by the age of eighteen. It is for these reasons that your board adopted a risk-based tobacco, retail tobacco permit program. This program requires that all facilities that sell tobacco and tobacco products must obtain a health permit. With this permit, the facility receives one health inspection and anywhere from one to three underage tobacco purchase surveys each year. Our department employs an extra help employee who is younger than the minimum legal age to purchase tobacco products. The underage tobacco purchase survey consists of sending the, this individual into permitted retail tobacco facilities throughout the year and having the underage employee attempt to purchase tobacco products. If a facility sells to our underage employee, the facility is in violation of the law and Kern County Ordinance Code and is subject to penalties. Kern County Ordinance Code, Section 8.60.100, establishes the penalty for violation of the tobacco retailer's permit. Pursuant to the ordinance, a facility responsible for the first violation within a five-year period is assessed a monetary penalty of $250. The second violation within a five-year period is assessed a monetary penalty of $500 and a thirty-day suspension of the tobacco retailer's permit. As your board will recall, on August 20th, 2024, your board heard an appeal requested by Mr. Willie Shawabane for Bros. Shop, Inc. for the sale of tobacco products to our underage decoy on March 13th and May 17th of 2024. Your board decided to uphold the violation and associated penalties. On March 5th, 2024, and May 17th, 2024, a clerk at Smoke Bros., Inc., also owned by Mr. Shawabane, sold tobacco products to our underage employee. On June 6th, 2024, Mr. Shawabane submitted an appeal of the second violation for Smoke Bros., Inc. to our department. On June 14th, 2024, Mr. Shawabane's appeal was heard at the department level. During the appeal, Mr. Shawabane indicated that his employees rotate between his stores and that they are now equipped with a system that reads identification and flags the clerk if the person attempting to purchase tobacco, tobacco products is underage. Due to the continuous tobacco sales to the underage decoy in Mr. Shawabane's tobacco retail stores, the department upheld the decision to suspend the tobacco retailer's permit and assess a monetary penalty to Mr. Shawabane for Smoke Bros., Inc. On July 12th, 2024, Mr. Shawabane submitted a request to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors to appeal the department's decision to uphold the violation and associated penalties. On July 22nd, 2024, a payment was received by the department in the amount of $500 for the administrative penalty associated with the second violation at Smoke Bros., Inc. And on July 25th, 2024, an inspection conducted by departmental staff confirmed all tobacco items had been removed from display within Smoke Bros., Inc., meaning that Smoke Bros., Inc. was confirmed to be serving the suspension of the tobacco retailer's permit. On August 20th, I personally spoke with Mr. Shawabane regarding his request to appeal the department's decision related to Smoke Bros., Inc. to clarify his intentions, given he had already paid his monetary penalty and served his suspension. He verbally indicated that his intention was to request the violation be removed from Smoke Bro, Inc.'s record. Considering the continued disregard for the law and Kern County Ordinance Code, Mr. Shawabane's tobacco retail facilities and the potential long-term health threat these actions pose, it is recommended that you deny the appeal and uphold the second violation for Smoke Bros., Inc., including the thirty-day suspension of the tobacco retailer's permit, which has already been served, and the assessment of the $500 administrative penalty, which has already been paid. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this concludes my comments at this time. It would be appropriate to open the public hearing and receive Mr. Shawabane's testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. This is normally where I say welcome back, but that's probably, you, you would probably rather be anywhere than, than here, so... Good to see you. You're good.
But, um, kinda continuing on to what she said, I, I already served my suspension and the time served, I mean, and I paid the fines already. The only thing I was hoping to kind of achieve was, uh, I'd say, cause you know how they have like strikes? There's like two, three strikes on your tobacco license. I was hoping to kind of get at least one removed to, and it's kind of helped move forward on with the business. I'm, I am doing a lot better with all the IDs and checking, and, and I have been losing a lot of customers, but like I said, I don't mind as long as, you know, the law is in force of the IDs. So, I mean, the last time I was here, she talked about that I haven't served the suspension. So I did talk to her after that last court date and showed her that the city did come to my business and verify that I am following the suspension code of taking all the stuff down. So other than that, honestly, there is nothing else for me to, to kind of say, to be honest. Other than I'm already working on and trying to do better with the IDs.
Thank you. Stay, stay close, we may have some questions for you. I don't have any lights on. The request that he made was to do what again?
Mr. Chairman, his request is not to remove the suspension or the monetary penalty, but to wipe that second violation from his record so that he would fall back down from a high-risk tobacco facility to a moderate-risk tobacco facility.
And what, what's the consequence to him and to us of doing that?
His annual permit fee is a little bit higher when he's a high-risk tobacco facility for five years until that violation falls off his record. And when he's a high-risk tobacco facility, our underage decoy does visit his facilities three times a year versus two times a year if he's just a moderate-risk tobacco facility.
But it's not, this, that's, that's all there, there is to it?
That's correct.
It's not something that's reported to the state, that we have any?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Still don't have any lights on. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for coming back. I know these are not easy processes. I think you've done a nice job. These are complicated for us, as it's, you know, the, involves the harming of, of minors, which, you know, I realize is, is, which is complicated, I get that, uh, on many levels, as it, the commercial aspects of that. But, but this is a hard issue. I appreciate you being here. I have a lot of respect for you to coming back and, and doing what you're doing. Is there any reason, my question is to the Director, do you see any reason to, to decide or to make a different decision here based on what we're hearing from the applicant? Do we have any, in your opinion, mitigating factors that would cause us to either give grace for whatever reason? I don't know those factors, but, you know, this pretty much seems pretty open and shut to me in terms of the, you've, you've cut, you know, you've checked your boxes, and this gentleman seems to be improving his processes. But I'm just curious what your sort of gut is on that.
Supervisor Perez through the chair. Typically, we would want to see these changes made after the first violation. Mr. Shawabane has two tobacco retail facilities, and both of them are now on their second violation. And it is now that Mr. Shawabane is implementing these corrective actions that we wish we would have seen after the first violation and taking it seriously at that time. I am very grateful that he is now taking those actions. At the end of the day, ultimately, that is what our department wants to see. We want to see these corrective actions so that the continued sale does not exist. So I'm grateful for that, and I think that that should be taken into consideration.
Okay, that's helpful.
Can I, can I say something else, or?
It's up to the chair.
Truly.
I know it's not to my defense, but those, those two violations on two businesses happened within two weeks for both of them. Like, I got hit with both stores, same time. It's like they left one store and went straight to the other one. So it's like, the timing for everything that happened within those, so I basically got four violations within two weeks. And to me, that's pretty crazy, too, like, so it's like, by the time I even got the first letter, the second inspection was already done. So it's like, I didn't, so it's like, I seen the letter, I let the workers know. Within like a couple of days later, then another mail comes in, and it's like, you know what I mean? So it's like, but after those two times, which happened consecutively within, not, not even like, like two weeks.
Let me say it in the best way to put you in a good light, that, that I'm hearing. And that is, the notification you got of the first violation came in a very, you didn't have very much time to get with your employees and educate them on what the, what they ought to be doing. Cause you can look at this on, on the other side of the coin, is it happened twice in two weeks, dude? Right?
That's what I'm saying, it's like, it doesn't make me look good, but it's like, at the same time, it's not like I had like a month to like, you know, to get everybody ready and make sure like everybody's on, it was just right after each other, you know?
I, I, I understand what you're saying.
But it's like, ever since that time, I've had a lot of time till now to make sure everything is like, to order what I needed, to bring in what I needed, to figure out what I needed, you know, to make sure everything kind of runs smoothly.
Essentially, you're asking us to treat two violations as one because they happened so close together, and you weren't really given enough time, in your opinion, to get with your employees and, and talk to them about what they, how they needed to behave and act when they were.
In terms of suspension and the fine, I kind of already took care of both of those.
That's, it's already run its course, you did that and paid that.
I wasn't trying to, I was just hoping on the risk thing, like, I don't mind, like, I know she said, you get two versus three, I don't mind if you bring in like fifty, like a year. Like, I just wanna show that I am working to improve. Like, even if it takes to send in more inspection people throughout the business, I'm okay with that, too.
What's the difference in the fee?
It's around like 500.
You said it's, it's a small difference, but how much is it?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have that right in front of me, but it's between, it's around $300 a year, the difference in the fee.
So let me ask you this, whatever he pays, I mean, as he just said, we could go send a decoy in once a month, once a day, however often you want, right? You just know you're gonna get, if you're a high-risk, or whatever you're calling that category, you're gonna get at least three.
That is correct.
It could be more.
That's correct.
Okay. Supervisor Flores.
Thank you. And then I have a question, thank you, Chairman, for Bryn, Ms. Kerrigan. I think, are we not dealing with more than two violations, though? Isn't there more?
Supervisor Flores.
For some reason, I'm thinking there's four. Am I, am I correct or incorrect?
Supervisor Flores through the chair. We are talking about a total of four violations spread across two different facilities, both owned by Mr. Shawabane. And on August 20th, your board heard about the two violations from the previous facility, and now we're talking about two violations in this facility today.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. So I think that number is important for the total record. And then this one is for Mr. Shawabane. So since you've already paid and you've already had the suspension, can you tell me again why you're seeking the appeal?
Okay, for one, I'm a young business owner, so everything that I've kind of made throughout my life is kind of invested into these stores. So putting the business at a second or high risk, that means like, let's say if somebody else or a new person messes up one time, then I lose the whole business, and I haven't made anywhere close to whatever, kind of like, invested into it. So I don't, it's more of so like, I don't wanna take a loss on my investment. And at the same time, it's like, because the hap, the problem happened within two weeks, I feel like I could do a lot, a lot better than that, you know?
Okay, so, and I thank you for the measures you've implemented, but how is it that you're gonna lose your business? On, on, on what grounds?
I mean, from, from my, from what I know, I just, I know that if you get your third, you know, hit on the license and they get, you're suspended, they suspend, I mean, they get rid of your tobacco license, and they already suspended it a couple of times already.
Okay, so we...
I mean, she could probably help clarify that, I don't know how that whole thing works, but from what I've heard, it's once you get your third... but from what I've heard, it's, once you get your third hit or anything, then you're basically like, close to losing it, and it is a tobacco business, so I kind of mainly focus on tobacco.
Okay. So would he lose his license if, on the, on the third, even if we, so if we took, if we took one away and he got hit a third time, would he lose it?
Supervisor Flores through the chair, on the fourth violation of a facility within a five-year period of time, the department does have the ability to actually withdraw the permit from the facility, but it's the fourth violation.
So the fourth, so, so is it a moot point, even if we take one off, if he's hit four times, that trigger, the trigger is the trigger, right? It doesn't matter if he's successful in the appeal or not?
Supervisor Flores through the chair, if your board agrees to dismiss this as counting as a second violation, then technically his third violation, if he was to receive one, would then be on record as his second violation.
Okay, so it does matter, okay. So, well, for me, I'm going by your history, and your history has been complicated, and I think that that would serve as an impetus, I think denying the appeal would serve as an impetus to you to run a better operation, and if you run a better operation, you don't have to worry about a fourth or third, because you'll be doing it the right way. So if you do it the right way, you have nothing to worry about. So if anything, you should be double-flagged for your record, not taken away, because you, your, your operation has, has been, has been less than stellar, so I don't know why I, as a board member, would reward you by taking away from your record when your record's pronounced. So I think the way that I like to proceed, since you're in my district with two shops, is use this as a chance to run a good operation. I'm, I'm not going to take away penalties for the penalties that are earned. I, I want you to, to run a good operation, you don't have nothing to worry about, you won't lose your license. If you do it right, you won't lose your license. Why would I, why would I minimize your operation when your operation has demonstrated not a good record with, with four violations, and, and these are youth? I have to look out for the well-being of the community here. I'm, I'm not going to minimize it, but I'm just one vote.
Okay, I understand that, I understand where you're coming from, not saying that you're rewarding me with, because I don't take that as a reward, it's more of so like, I'd say like a leeway.
I think it's a very generous reward to, to, to detract from your record when it's pronounced. That, that we're going to minimize four, four issues here. Why would I minimize that?
I mean, the, I feel like, just the span of how quick it happened was within like, two weeks. It's not like it was a long history of continuing to messing up.
But you're, you're making my point, the, the fact that was in such a close time period, you, you're, you're actually more acute.
But it's like, bringing back my, my argument from last time when I was here, it was just, the class that I took, it was just, they taught me things that I'd say like lowered the security of the IDs on my stores, like, instead of enforcing, asking for IDs, I was just went to asking on the verbal question, and I guess some of them might have forgot to ask them that, but now it's either straight IDs or nothing.
Got it. No, I, I commend you, you're trying to protect your business, I have to protect the health of the community.
But at the same time, I think, the reason, another reason, too, is just the permit fees, it is like an extra like, six, $700 compared to like, what it normally would cost.
I know, but the, but the way you avoid that, the, the way you avoid the fee structure, you avoid the hassle, is by running a tighter ship, okay?
And I'm working on that.
Okay, and I think you are sincere, and you're doing that, and I, I hope your new measures work. Thank you.
County Council has punched in.
Thank you, Chair. There's just, there's been some conversations about the, what happens after a first violation and a second violation, and Deputy Jen Feige's provided me a copy of the, the Ordinance Code, and what it says is that the following sanction may be imposed. For the first violation in any five-year period, the tobacco retailer shall receive a notice of violation from the department. For the second violation, and in any five-year period, the person's tobacco retailer's permit shall be suspended for up to 30 days. For a third violation in any five-year period, the person's tobacco retailer permit shall be suspended for up to 90 days. And for a fourth or subsequent violation in any five-year period, the tobacco's retail permit shall be suspended for up to 180 days and/or revoked. So I believe, Chairman Couch, you asked what would happen, you know, with a different number of, of violations, and it would also, not only is there a fee, but it goes into, it plays into, if there were to be a future violation, the length of time that the permit could be suspended.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Chairman. A few questions. So this would be for Director Kerrigan. It seems like, well, actually, let me go back, so there were two violations at two different stores. Did those both happen within a period of a couple weeks at, at each location?
Supervisor Peters through the chair, thank you for this question, and it's a good opportunity for some clarification. Within the Smoke Bros, Inc. store that is up for your board's consideration this morning, the first violation occurred on March 5th, 2024, and the second violation occurred on May 17th, 2024. As far as the Bros Shop, Inc., which is the other store that was heard on August 20th in front of your board, the first violation occurred on March 13th, 2024, and the second violation occurred on May 17th, 2024.
So, a couple months, a span, not a couple weeks necessarily. That's a...
Can I interject in there?
Sure.
The violation occurs, when does he get notice of the violation, that the violation occurred? How long does that take?
Mr. Chairman, specifically on Smoke Bros, Inc., the vi, the first violation occurred on March 5th, 2024. Our notice of violation was sent to Mr. Shawabane on March 8th, 2024, so three days following the violation. And for the second violation that occurred on May 17th, 2024, the notice of violation was sent to Mr. Shawabane on May 25th, so about a week later on that second violation.
Thank you. Sorry.
No problem, thanks. So how, how many employees do you have between these stores? I know you said that some of your employees rotate between stores.
So sometimes, like, if I'd say I'm working in a store, I'll have the employee go to a different store, and if I can't work that day, then he'll work in the store that I'm working at. It's kind of like that.
Okay.
Like, I'll just, kind of like, wherever I could plug in, I'll just send them somewhere else.
But, I mean, as far as employees that you'd have working behind the counter, is there, there one other person besides you, is there three, four, five?
I mean, each store is, like, it's only usually just one person working at a time.
Okay, but, but in the total amount of employees you have between these stores?
It would be like two per day.
Okay. All right, well, you know, I'm definitely sympathetic to what you're saying. I know no matter what you try and do, or what policies you put in place, you know, as a business owner, I know that sometimes employees don't necessarily do what they're directed to do, sometimes they make mistakes, I mean, that, these things happen, I get it, it's, it's a hazard. But also, I mean, you know, to Supervisor Flores' point, he's looking out for the interest of the community, and, you know, it's the same thing, if you're, you know, owning a bar, you know, that's, once, once or twice you serve somebody underage, you lose your license, you're, you're out of business, and it's, it's an unfortunate reality that, you know, we, we have, this, this, we have to worry about this, because, you know, youth do try and get alcohol, they do try and get drugs, or nicotine, whatever it is, and we have to, you know, be the, the line of defense against that, so, and, and that does, it can place your, your investment in jeopardy, but, again, I'm sympathetic to the issue, but I, I agree with Supervisor Flores, and it sounds like you're making some, some positive changes to keep that from happening, and I encourage you to keep up with it, and I think that's all the comments I have.
Thank you. Chairman Macy's last one, last thing. I didn't punch in, sorry. Also, before I make a motion, there's also, not just you, but there's a precedent here for the, for the entire county. If, if we're lenient here, there's bigger consequences for the other stores and other shops who are going to say, me too, me too, me too. I don't like the weakening of the system, but I'd, I'd like to make a motion to sustain staff's recommendation to deny the appeal of the sanitization of the, of the record.
I'll second.
I'm going to vote in favor of that, but I want to say something to you. You had me at two weeks. Unfortunately, it was longer than two weeks, but I think you're, you appear to be a pretty upstanding guy, and I'm not a big fan of tobacco, but keep your nose clean. Thank you. You have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to the end of the morning agenda. I just need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moved.
Without objection, we adjourn. Thank you.